All right, we'll get the show started. We're a little late here. Technical difficulties. We'll get her going. I'll call it's order and got a quorum, so let's say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, along those same lines, I think we should all just take probably a moment of silence here to remember the victims of the incident down in Las Vegas today and pray for their families and stuff like that, so we'll take a minute here. All right, thank you. Okay, so Vance will approve the minutes the next go around?
It's up to you.
Go ahead and read them.
Okay, September 25th, we were all present. We recited the pledge. The minutes from September 11th approved by first motion from Sharon, second by Dave, a consent, first by John, second by Dave. The regular agenda approved by first motion from Brian and second by John. Mayor Corey Peterson opened the public forum regarding the 2018 budget at 7:12. There were seventeen people in attendance. After some discussion regarding the reduction of the mill levy, the 2018 budget was approved by Dave and second by Sharon. All passed and all in favor. Under Mr. Croker, Onsted Twitchell, the county accessory agreement was tabled. Pending a meeting with Paul Vance and Dave on September 26th, which we did meet. Also, the county planning services was also tabled till tonight. Excuse me, the social media policy presented by Mr. Croker approved by first motion by Dave and second by John. Excuse me. That is all in place. All employees have signed. It's in their permanent file and uploaded on SharePoint. Excuse me. Interstate engineering, Mr. Dollman, 2017-1, approved by first motion for Brian, second by John. All were in favor. The change, the change order. Go ahead, Matea.
The change order.
Excuse me.
Was tabled. To tonight. The pedestrian crossing codes approved by first motion Sharon, Sharon and second by Dave. Motion passed and all were in favor. Sharon, for the portfolio reports. Sharon had an update from Jason Benson about the hole from the diversion. Possible bypass road to the west went to judge and there hasn't been an answer. There's a meeting on Friday, September 29th, 2017, for a temporary fix. If bypass road is approved, this will take six weeks to complete. An inquiry for more signage was discussed. Training program that will be posted to the website if anyone is interested. Dave introduced our new assistant city auditor, Matea Heisler. Brian went over the regional water management meeting on Wednesday, September 27th. He also went over the water tower inspection. More discussion to follow at the next meeting tonight. John had no report. Corey, the discussion on future horse development plan tabled until next meeting, tonight, October 2nd. Vance presented the August 2017 financial statements for discussion. And after no further business or discussion, the meeting was adjourned at 9:03 PM.
Okay. Anybody have anything they had or change on that? I think that was pretty much as I recall. If I get a motion to accept the minutes is read. John? Sharon? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here we go. All right, move on to the next deal here. Consent agenda. Did you guys get a chance to look at that?
Mr. Mayor, we do have one addition, I believe.
Okay.
Let's scroll down a little bit, Mayor. Oh no, it is in there.
The one at the bottom?
Twenty-six KPH.
Okay.
Pay request number six, presented by Mr. Dollman.
Okay. So on the appliance disposal, does that just kind of, is that just like, is that once a month type thing, or does he just do that by the load? How does he do that?
It's kind of a as needed basis.
Got it, okay.
I have contracted with Paul Erdman, and he charges us $10 to... The guys bring it to the city shop area and then Paul picks it up from there. And would we get accumulation of a few?
That's when he comes by. Okay. I just, I didn't know what the arrangement was on that, so that's cool.
And $10 a shot, so it's, you know, fairly reasonable.
Yeah, I'm not going to argue with that. Okay. I didn't see anything on there, guys? Either one of you? Is that going to get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, proceed.
Mr. Mayor, are you at the regular agenda now?
That's where we are. Got some more stuff you want to add?
Well, Mr. Altenberg? Oh, there you are. Okay. We're going to add him as 6A. Item number six is kind of out of place there. We already had the discussion on the water meeting, water meter discussion, so...
Okay.
Adam will be 6A. And Mr. Corsman, I forgot to, he wants to talk a little bit about P and Z, so under John's portfolio, let's add P and Z discussion there.
And you can also remove Midwest landscape?
Oh, okay.
I think that's something that could be handled in-house with some letters.
Okay, thank you.
And you can add Jason Benson update on your mind.
Okay.
You got that all sorted out, Vance?
Lucas, Jim, are you okay with what I have listed here?
This one's up to you guys. Do you want to discuss the, that water rate or wait for Brian to be here?
I think we should wait.
Because he asked me to update the ordinance, but he's not here, so...
Well...
It was just what we had-
We've got the numbers.
Well, no, it's not for the resolution.
No, this is just the first read, I'm sure, to-
The ordinance is still, it still has the rates.
The number's in it. We want to take that out and make those resolution.
So I did that today, but it's just a matter of if you guys want to do it tonight or if you want to wait till the next meeting. But that's, the ordinance says that's two readings.
Mm-hmm. Basically, it's what we discussed, right? Which were taking the numbering out of the ordinance, otherwise the rest of it is the same. With the exception of a clause that you added in there, it'll be updated via resolution by council.
So let's let him talk about it, then.
Okay, so we added to the OTs.
Yep.
So Vance, you want to just put water rate ordinance under Onsted Twitchell?
Got it.
Jim, are you okay with yours?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. I think I'm good to go on this end.
Sharon?
Sharon?
Good.
Good.
Okay. I'll set the motion with the additions and corrections.
Yep.
I'll make a second.
Okay, Sharon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So then with that, we'll go to Adam then? Okay. Yep.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, for having me here tonight.
Yep.
My name is Adam Altenberg, and I'm with the Metropolitan Council of Governments. And I'm here to talk briefly about the Cass-Clay Food Commission. So in addition to some of our transportation and planning projects that we work on, we also help with the facilitation of some of our multi-jurisdictional committees in the area, whether it be our transit coordinating board, the Heartland Trail Task Force, or our Bike-Ped Committee. Another of these groups is the Cass-Clay Food Commission, which was formed in late 2014 just to bring about greater awareness and discussion of some of the food, health and hungry issues in our area. Right now, it's an 11-member commission. It's made up of six elected officials from our major jurisdictions, as well as five at-large members with expertise in farming, community gardening and school nutrition. Its activities are coordinated by a steering committee, which includes public health and extension offices on both sides of the river. It also includes an area grocer, a couple of food consultants and MetroCog as well. Part of what this commission has focused on are some of the practicalities of urban egg and the development of some policy blueprints here that have looked at some of these issues. When you talk about urban egg, the biggest, the biggest topics that might come to mind are urban chickens and urban bees. But we've also looked at residential composting, front yard gardening, also looking at the practicalities of backyard season extenders, which allows you to garden a little bit longer throughout, throughout the season. So it's not just looking at the urban animals aspect, but looking at the entire spectrum of urban agriculture. With that, I should stress that this commission doesn't tell communities what it should do. It's basically to provide some policy guidance should a community decide to move forward on a particular food systems issue. An example, that would be the recent adoption of the urban chickens ordinance by the city of Fargo. This commission also hears regularly from some of our hundred relief organizations in the area just to give a sense of how things are going and if there are any particular needs that need to be brought up to our area councils or commissions. So back in our last meeting in September, the Cass-Clay Food Commission asked if we would come and contact the city of Horace to see about their interest in participating in this commission. Our meetings are held bimonthly. They're held in the Fargo City Commission chambers from 10:30 to noon. I should stress that our funding isn't, jurisdictions don't provide any funding for activities. It's actually funded through the North Dakota Department of Health through their chronic disease initiative, so we don't look for additional funding through our, from our jurisdictions for our commission activities. But with that, we, I, this is kind of just an opening discussion. We'd be happy to come back if you want additional information about this commission's activities. I guess right now, I'd like to open it up to you if you have any questions for me, if you have any other discussion topics you'd like to talk about.
Adam, which cities are, you said there were 11 jurisdictions that were members, who are they?
There's six elected officials, so from Fargo, West Fargo, Cass County, Clay County, Moorhead and Dilworth. So those are the six elected officials, and we have five at-large members that are appointed for two-year terms. And right now, we have two area farmers. We have a woman that's been involved in the community gardening efforts in both Fargo and Moorhead. And we also have school nutritionists from the West Fargo Public Schools, as well as Concordia College. That bring about a little bit of additional food expertise.
Does it mean I can see one of the things too that might come about here? I don't know if we're ready for it right now. It would be some type of a community garden layout block somewhere that would be set aside for the residents to use. We haven't done that before, but I could see that becoming and something that would be nice for the city to have available for people that don't have a good, or in a tree area and can't grow their own and would like to do that kind of thing. Provide something like that, I can see that. I'm assuming that, do you guys get involved in the stuff like in Moorhead there, that they've got those, their plots, or is that private plots? The impressive like Johnson Field or Johnson Park?
MB Johnson, the, there's the, yes, the Probst Field Community Gardens. One of the members of our steering committee has been involved in that. So we do hear regular updates about the activities of that.
Okay, so that would be like, we could consult with you guys to try and get an idea, you know, a layout and the type of thing and how we could set up something like that, basically going through the motions?
Yep, yep. It's something that West, we had, we went to talk to, let's say, West Fargo about a month ago, and we had this kind of the same top, same discussion topics about that. And interestingly enough, it's one of the top policy blueprints that I have here, so it talks about what are the processes that needs to go through, some of the issues that might come about, and then also provides some policy guidance for the jurisdictions if they want to move forward on a particular issue.
Right, okay.
Adam, do you have more information on the, the meeting? Is it like the second, the second week of the month or?
Yep, meetings are the second Wednesday of, so basically January, March, May, July, September and November. We have information on the meetings, both on MetroCog's website and then Fargo-Cass Public Health, Public Health's website also has information on the meeting minutes, meeting agendas and particular issues that have been discussed. And there's also, there's also a Facebook page too, if people want to take a look at that.
Adam, real quick, what was the line about urban chicken policy?
Come on, everybody's so entertaining.
It's, it's one of the, I mean, it's, it can be a contentious issue and it's, it's one of the issues that our commission has looked at in addition to other issues that include kind of that spectrum of urban agriculture. So with the city of Fargo, that's something that's kind of been an issue for several years. They had no real clear direction on, well, there was, there were, there are conflicting ordinances in their health code and their zoning code, which kind of allowed it, which kind of didn't allow it. And basically, the Fargo City Commission just kind of wanted to find a solution to this issue, so it was through the help of this commission, through the help of developing this blueprint that looked at some of the, what are, what are the benefits of urban chickens, but what are some of the issues as well? And taking a look at, well, some of the practicalities, if you're going to allow it, then how many, how many birds are you going to allow? What are some of the coop restrictions, setbacks from property lines and so forth?
It's just ironic, I just got a phone call on this like-
Really?
Isn't there like only one person in Fargo that has urban chickens?
That you know about?
That was on the news or something.
There were estimates, based, based on some unofficial estimates, that the city of Fargo and Fargo-Cass Public Health, they were estimating that there were probably about 200 families that had urban chickens. But with this new ordinance that came about, there's a permitting process, and I don't know how many people have now applied for permits, but I think it's, that number is still pretty low. But I think there's still, maybe justify this a little bit. It's, it was just passed and I think there's still a little bit of newness to this. People are maybe not aware of the new regulations of this ordinance.
Unless they missed the paper, there were some good write-ups in the paper, but yeah, so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think it's probably something that would be worthwhile that we send a representative.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah.
So we could volunteer maybe Dave or Brian's.
We can vote either one of those. Well, you're not here to defend yourself, man. You're open season.
Even if we, we have two of us that, if one of us is unavailable, we could send a proxy of some kind.
Basically a representative.
It's not a designated specific person. Preferably, of course, but-
Preferably, but that's, that would be allowable. We do allow for proxy members, of course, so that would be fine.
Okay. I agree. I think it's something that we should do. Appreciate you coming down here and having a chat with us, and I said we'll-
Could you send us more information, please?
Sure, I can, I can do that here.
So next Wednesday then, basically you guys meet again, right?
We just met in September, so our next meeting will be in November.
Oh, I got a routine, yeah, okay.
I have to get an invitation.
Yeah.
So I think if you just send us a reminder email, you know?
Because MetroCog sends out reminder emails on the other meetings, we might as well get in that loop too.
Yeah.
So that would be okay. Then we'll get somebody down there. Okay? Anything else, guys? Thank you for stopping out this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jesse, Cole, which one of you two wants to do the big display tonight? All right.
All right, so we had 80 calls for service this month. Part of that, there's three traffic complaints and then seven calls for deputies tempting warrants. There's one crash, two reckless driving, one juvenile complaint, seven animal calls, five alcohol-related, three medicals. We had 17 citations and 69 warnings, no parking tickets and three drug-related incidents. Cole and I both attended the city council meeting, patrol meeting last month. We both attended the advanced roadside impairment, driving enforcement training. Then we both attended defensive tactics training. And then I attended a PR event that they were having over at Kid Ventures daycare there. Let me see. The only thing out of the ordinary, we had quite a few calls pertaining to like thefts and fraud in the area. So that's something to keep in mind. The stealing camper batteries and stuff like that, that's kind of been a big thing still. So just keep your stuff locked up. And I don't know if it's, if it comes down to taking your battery off of there when you're not using it or what, but if we don't, it's tough. If there's no, it's not like in camera view or something like that, it's hard to find somebody that did it, so.
Right.
That's kind of been a hot item around here lately, so. But then the fraud thing, we've had a few, a few different frauds. Couple of them are like the typical thing of people stealing identity, things like that. But one of the specific ones was, it's been kind of common lately. A lot of people are getting phone calls saying that it's somebody from the sheriff's office and you didn't show up for your court date, you have a warrant and we need you to give us this amount of money or meet us here to give us this money. That's not something that we would ever do.
Right.
So if you ever get a phone call like that, just hang up and give us a call and then we're documenting all of those, so.
We should probably said something about that in the Horace happening to remind people.
Yeah, I was thinking if he could, do you have-
Say to an email or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could do that, because then we'll just put it in there. So just to remind people, I mean, everybody needs to be reminded of that stuff once in a while too. So, any?
What were the drug offenses?
The drug offenses, those were all, nothing that was focused in any area. They were all off traffic stops, if I remember right. So people coming through the area, it's just something that we ended up finding there on the traffic stop. So yeah, there was nothing, any specific locations or anything like that, so.
Are they slowing down on 17 up here by the school yet?
I was just going to ask that.
No? We've had this for a long time. What, people are hard to get patterns trained, huh?
I feel like it's a little bit better since we moved, like, when we first moved in, it was every single car. Now it's like, I mean, maybe every third or fourth.
Other? Well, I suppose that's some progress.
A lot of people, a lot of people coming into the 25 mile an hour zone at like 45 or something.
I know old habits are hard to break, but good grief, you know?
We've had discussion on moving the signs back or where we, where are we at?
Is that some conversation we have to have with the county if we're going to be doing something like that?
Probably that'd be highway department, be my guess. Yeah, I mean, I feel like it would be a good idea just because of the city growing kind of that way. And like I said, the church, I mean, you're still in a 55 mile an hour zone when you hit the church entrance there. And there's a lot of traffic that comes and goes out of that area, so.
Well, it's still a point of getting down from the 55 to 40 and then all of a sudden kind of five.
Yeah. And the big thing is, I mean, there's a little leeway, I mean, it's inevitable you're going to have a lot of people that are still coming in a little bit fast or whatever. So I mean, if you can move it out and maybe they are getting closer to that 25 by the time they hit the school area, then that would probably be the best bet, I guess.
Well, because we know we're going, at some point, we're going to have to slow it down anyway. There's going to be way too much traffic up there, especially once that school gets going, you know?
Yeah.
And if it takes that long for people, patterns to start getting broke, you know, we might have to look at that.
Do that sooner or later.
Yeah, that's what I mean. People won't like it. I mean, they'll be grumpy about it, but it's just, well, it is what it is. I mean, this is a safety thing now, not a hot rod thing.
Add a few seconds on your travel time.
I also think once we put that crosswalk in by the school and put those flashing signs up, that that will help as well, because it'll be a visual, even though it's not directly related to...
Done question, those lights go out further before the crosswalk? Yeah, it would be a school zone if that's what you're going to do, it's a school zone.
You mean like before you get to the crosswalk?
Because that's what you, you see the lights.
Yeah.
It's not right after crosswalk, it's further out. I think where the 25 mile an hour zone is, it's almost right where the lights would be, so you really wouldn't have any warning, so it does need to move more. Yeah, there's actually a state law on distance from sign to sign for reducing your speed. Go from like 55 to 25, or 55 to 40, you know, maximum.
Right, you have to graduate it down, yeah.
Well, Mr. Mayor, is it time to get that discussion with the right people, with the highway department or whatever, and see what we need to do to make that happen?
Well, I was assuming that's that conversation with Jason Benson, and we'll probably have to start there.
My thoughts are that like, when you start getting all those other homes built in, I mean, Wall Avenue is going to be, I mean, there's going to be a lot more traffic on that because that's where all the houses are going and stuff, and that's getting, there's going to be double the traffic coming into Horace. There's already a lot, especially when you get around like the daytime traffic, so.
Well, I know that, and plus, like I said, you're going, by this time next year, we'll notice a lot more traffic on Wall. That I always funnel to 17 and north, and then the same thing on the reverse side, they'll be coming through the school zone.
Yeah.
Well, you also, you kind of said a traffic study, do we need a light to, otherwise it's one right after the other. Would a light make a difference down here to Wall Avenue to, you know, where it would give a break for some of the developments north? You know, you try to turn in going north off some of those developments, it's not easy.
Well, I think there's requirements here to traffic lights, or you're not just going to get one just because you want one. That's, we're not even close to the, we're not even, we're not even close to needing a requirement to get a traffic light, I mean.
Just something to break it up a little bit, it just it's just a steady stream.
Well, and that's really the challenge with reducing the speed. You reduce it further out, it just means the traffic going further north is, makes it much more difficult to get out. Because, you know, frankly, in the morning, the only way a lot of people get out is because you have a bus coming and they're going, you know, they are doing 40. And they're not doing 55, so that provides a pretty big break in the traffic for people trying to, trying to go north.
Well, I think, we'll start that conversation with Jason and just see what we, you know, how long's this going to take to get things going? But I too think that we're going to have to stretch that further north. I mean, at some point in time, County Road 17, that corridor is probably going to be reduced to 40 or 35, the whole length, anyway.
Should get that other school put in there and stuff too. And I mean, I, there's, I don't really know if there's any better way to do it, but even when schools coming in and schools getting out and stuff, and obviously people are parked along Main Street there. So I mean, that's just more traffic, people sitting there when you got people coming in at 45, 50 miles an hour, so.
Right.
I think by the time that school shows up in 2022, or whatever year it's going to be, we'll have, we'll have a lot difference, traffic flow patterns and-
Yeah.
Well, you mentioned you did what, 69, 70 stops?
Yeah, there are those 69 warnings.
Warnings, I mean, that's the thing, if you're not, it comes down to a point too where warnings have to maybe turn into tickets. You know, people just don't learn until they start paying to a new point, even though it's not a huge fine, it's still. I think we're trying to take this slowly and do due diligence on, you know, not hammer it too hard, but it comes down to a point where we have to slow down.
Yeah, and we do, I mean, we take into account, kind of look in, because it documents the warnings and stuff too when people get them. So I mean, if we can, we can go back and look and if people have like five warnings-
A collection.
Last month or something, then that's something that we might up a little bit too.
Well, I mean, if you guys aren't concerned about it, I guess, but it's just something, we'll have to keep an eye on that a little bit. If we're not seeing any change in that zone, we're going to have to do something different.
It's probably more so, maybe even for the future, the stuff that you have coming up probably would be, I don't know, planning ahead as far as the speed zone and stuff. Because I mean, you're getting away with it right now. It's not like, obviously it'd be nice if they were slowing down before they got there, but.
Well, the change here right now is that we have five signs, two on the east side, three on the, or three on the east side and two on the west side, further down.
Yep. But I guess, I suppose we got to talk to Jason and make sure they're okay with that, or if they were, if it's in their plan, that they were going to come down and do that, you know, if they used to step on toes, they want to do the county road. We'll let them do it, but we should let them know, you know, that would be us, we'll get a hold and let them know if this is what we're thinking, because if they're not there yet, we'd like them to get there sooner.
Not to prolong this, but what about on the south end of town? Is that an issue?
Um, I don't know, it's more that there's still like- Um, I don't know, it's more that there's still like, people are, like, when they're leaving town, they're speeding up to whatever, forty-five, fifty. Well, before they hit that forty mile an hour zone.
Yeah.
But then you hit the point where that's kind of the end of town too, so it's not like there's a school there, there's not like, it's still, I mean, they're going faster than they should be in the twenty-five zone. So that's still something that we can, we can hit too, but, but it's not as big of a concern as far as the people that are around there, you know?
Right, it's, it's more appears in there, but yeah.
And there's not even a lot of intersecting roads coming in, so you don't have to worry about like the people.
Just that one of the relaying there to people, but there's not that much traffic going that way, you know?
And then that might open up when you have the, when you get County Seventeen finished up down there too, so who knows?
Exactly, so, all right, anything else?
Jesse?
Yes.
Excuse me, you guys, I'm, street dance October seventh through eighth, are you aware of that?
Oh, yes.
I believe the commission met today, is that correct, Sharon?
I believe so.
I think so. It's a grand opening for Big Erbs.
Okay.
Uh, closure of Cas seventeen.
That was the one year anniversary, not the grand opening.
Give it the one year anniversary.
That was a year ago.
Yeah.
It's one year anniversary.
Oh, scratch that one.
We'll rewind the tape.
Why do you wait the soft opening?
One year anniversary. Okay, thanks, Lucas, but anyway, um.
Is that, is that the Saturday?
Yep.
That's an opener too, if you remember.
Okay, I know, I'm pretty sure we're having people there.
Yeah, I think there's two.
Yeah, so there'll be two, two of us there.
Okay.
Um, I'm, uh, you, I don't know, you working in the day, I don't know, if you worked that weekend or not.
Yeah, that's already been scheduled, yes.
But there is a couple of people that'll be there from, from.
You have to have two, so.
So yeah, and I'll probably, I'll maybe send out an email or whatever, just so people are aware that's going on too.
Okay, thank you, perfect.
Maybe that's where they're open for lunch now.
It's a rough crowd, man, I'm telling you.
What did Mr. Corson say?
I just wanted to remind you they're open for lunch.
I didn't know if you'd been there for lunch or not.
I've been kind of, nevermind.
Yeah. Jesse, thank you. All right. Lucas, it's like you're up on the agenda here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The first item I have is a public hearing for the confirmation of special assessment list for sewer improvement district two thousand and sixteen dash one. I sent the list to Brian, I believe.
Yep. Now, did he put?
If you want to open it, you can, um, it's thirty-one pages long.
Yep.
And the, the way that the commission decided to, um, determine the amount that was assessed was just based off of hookups. So whoever's hooked up to that sewer just gets, it was just divided equally amongst, if you were connected to the sewer system.
Right.
So that's what the commission decided.
And that was published already in the paper, right?
Well, it had to go through the special assessment commission first, and they had to publish it, and nobody commented on their August thirtieth meeting. And so then tonight, notice is published for a public hearing for tonight's meeting, so people can come and discuss their assessment. So there's a public hearing, and then after that, you either confirm the list or.
Because we got two of them, right?
Yep. I have it here if you wanna see it.
Did that not get, hold on a second?
Yes.
Did it get, is it there? If it's not, I can.
Public meeting, is this it now?
Which one is it?
No?
Ryan, two thousand and sixteen, that one?
Do you see it up there, otherwise I'll send it.
It's right there, sewer improvement and water improvement.
Yep. So we're doing sewer one first?
Yes, sir.
Where do we have ours?
Brian sent it.
It was an email?
Yep. Even it is up on SharePoint too, but either one.
So why don't I see it on SharePoint?
So basically, this is, basically, whatever the number was, divided amongst all the properties. That's what we came up with.
Yep, it was just, it was discussed quite extensively actually, on how to figure out the number. And it was determined that it was based on just hookups for each one.
This is just the looping project?
No, this is the lining.
Oh, the lining, okay.
Which is probably these, the way to do it. See it, John, or?
Do you want me to email it to you guys tomorrow?
I've got it here, I can mail it right now.
It is on SharePoint?
Yep.
Okay.
What's it under on SharePoint?
Yeah. Go down a little bit.
Sewer improvement.
So it's mine.
Well, you're not seeing, reload your screen.
Reload it.
So, Mr. Mayor, you would be opening up the public hearing.
Okay, okay, so we'll open up the public hearing on the sewer relining project, we'll call it, which is two thousand and sixteen dash one. If anybody's got any comments on it, we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody got anything they wanna add or say?
Anyone here in protest?
Twenty years.
It was a twenty year.
Twenty years at that price, or?
No, that number divided by twenty.
Oh, so someone could.
You could pay that off.
Could pay that off, it's.
Trans, translate this number to a monthly payment, roughly.
A monthly payment?
I don't know.
Or.
Math?
Yeah, and annual would be.
Twenty years divided.
Yeah.
I mean.
Sounds like the live feed stopped again, we'll have to.
No, this number is total.
That's twenty years.
So it's like twenty-seven to twenty-nine divided by twenty years, I mean, that's.
It sounds like the live feed stopped. Brian just sent me a text saying the live feed stopped.
Two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and seventeen.
Just see if smart link went down again.
Why don't you look at that, twenty-seven dollars?
Hundred and thirty-six bucks a year.
Eleven dollars and thirty-seven cents a month.
Yeah, right.
To prolong the sewer?
What's that?
A year.
Yeah.
A hundred dollars a month?
Eleven dollars and thirty-seven cents a month.
Which could be paid off earlier.
That's a property owner's discretion, as far as when they want it paid off.
Probably the first way to do it.
Yeah, I don't think there's, there's no other way to do it, so. I think what I'll do then is I'm gonna close the public hearing on this. Unless anybody's got any objection to that. Okay, he says back online now. Okay. All right. You guys have any discussion you wanna do anymore on this, or I think we're. I get a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Sharon makes a motion.
I'll second John.
So this one, being this is, Lucas, do I gotta roll call this one?
Yeah.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
There we go. All right, Lucas, that's one squared away.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next one we have is the, it is water improvement district two thousand and sixteen dash three. Uh, once again, the special assessment commission had this public hearing on August thirtieth to receive comments from the public about the assessment. No comments were received and the assessment list was not changed. And that one was a little more, um, per one, per lot. So that one is five thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. And same situation here, the commission felt it best to just divide that amongst those that were connected and received a benefit from the, the water.
I believe this one's a water looping project?
Yeah.
It's a relooping project, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And so, same situation here.
Right, I was gonna say, so what, I mean, there really wasn't another mechanism to do that for that to be.
Yeah, and so the commission felt that this was the most fair option to do it.
I would concur with that too, so that would be.
So if you want, I have that here as our, I guess it's up there.
Suppose I'll open that up for public hearing too, if anybody wants to make a comment on it.
So are these essentially the same, the same list?
No.
Or they're, no, they're.
This is the water one.
Everybody that was on the first one is on the second one, just because that happened.
But not everyone on the second one is on the first one.
Vice versa. So basically, the sewer one was everybody in the city that has sewer.
The relining project.
Except for Prairie View, because Prairie View didn't receive benefit from that project.
Right.
The water looping was Chestnut and Wall and the area up by Casey's and up by what John's offices are, the area that received benefit from, from that. So if you got an assessment by the first, by the lining project, you got two, but not the other way around.
You think?
No.
No.
The other way around.
Other way around, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
I think that came out too.
Everyone that got the second assessment.
Got the first also, yes.
For the looping project also got the relining project, but not everyone who got the relining project.
Right.
Was getting the looping project.
We're all good. So it came out to about two hundred and sixty-eight dollars a year then for this one, the way it looks, that's a twenty year on that one as well, so.
Yeah, I believe so.
And so did, were there any comments, objections?
No comments or objections to this one either.
I think everybody's thrilled, actually.
Yeah, well, if you're looking at the numbers.
They're probably nice to have pressure.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments, public comments, otherwise I'll close the public comments section on this. And you guys have any comments, questions more so? Otherwise, I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Okay, John, Sharon, what do you think?
I'm gonna do what Cole, hold on a second.
Mm-hmm, Dave, Sharon's second, so.
Forgot.
Roll call, John.
Yes, sir.
Sharon?
Yes.
Okay. Done. Next up.
Uh, Lucas?
Yep.
I will assume that your office will contact Mary at Cas County regarding these figures and how to implement them like you typically do. Follow me? Okay, your office has to contact Cas County?
Yeah.
With, with these lists? Okay, and you will do that?
Yeah, I'll follow up tomorrow and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Who contacts who?
Okay, it's Mary at Cas County.
Okay.
Mary Matheson.
Sounds good. Yeah, so just to explain kind of Vance is saying that that way it gets on the rolls and then the tax goes out, so people know that they have to start paying for these projects. And then the city starts getting their money back.
Yep.
Yep, Cas County has no idea what we're doing, well, they do. But they don't have the numbers.
Sure, I, I got you, that just, that sounded good.
Yeah, the law firm, you know, gives them that information.
Sure, yep. All right, Lucas, you got the next one here?
Um, so the next two, you had asked that I put these back on the agenda for this week. However, I have not had any updates on them, so I'm not sure the status of these two agreements.
Okay.
Because there's supposed to be meetings on them, and I'm not sure if, like, well, for the assessor agreement, we know that's where the county said. Horace should just sign it basically, because all the other cities did, and they don't wanna change it, and so that one, there's not gonna be any changes to. The other one, I'm not sure if you guys agreed on a number for the planning services.
Well, we haven't gotten any numbers.
Yeah, I haven't seen them, because Councilman Schmidt emailed the county to request numbers.
He hasn't got anything back yet that I'm aware of, so.
I haven't seen it.
Otherwise, you would've gotten it, if they had forwarded or something, but I haven't seen anything either.
So we're probably gonna have to hold off on that one then. Well, I know we are, because there's no numbers.
Agreed, but the assessor agreement, we can get that one done tonight, because you brought it back to the original language, right?
Yeah, it's just the, the one that they sent.
Okay.
We don't wanna battle that one? Well, it's, you know, it just goes back to the point of it's, it's time to redo something and.
Yeah.
Differently, and that's all we're suggesting, instead of just rubber stamping the five hundred year old agreement. Being a little sarcastic on five hundred year, but.
Well, absolutely, and I mean, they did, they put in the new centricole provision. I know that's not changing at all, it just makes it current, but.
Well, Dave and I and Fennel and I and, we met with Paul on.
Paul Fercassi or?
Yes. And we did our due diligence on it, and Dave said that we should approve it, the board should approve it.
And like I said, it's, it's just, it's one of those things where it should be updated. The county should take the initiative next year to update it and then send it out.
Well, then let's say, this is just a one year contract, right?
No. Three.
Why don't we just change it to a year to a one year, and we'll sign a one year agreement? Sure, they can come up with new agreements for everybody.
She's John. John's, John's tough, he's being a tough, he's tough tonight.
I agree with Lucas on it, and I know you're maybe not saying don't sign it, but you did a lot of work on it, and I agree with your change.
However.
I'm trying to, oh yeah, I'm trying to think, I, like, I get, I get what you're saying, obviously, and I get that we should just probably approve it, but. I'm trying to think of how we can sign it and then say, can you revise it next year type deal.
I, I'd be willing to do that, I mean, especially with Councilman Fennel on doing his work, I'll support that, that's fine. But I, I don't wanna just sign it and not push the barrier for next go around that, hey, this needs to be done, let's just make a change, we already did the light work for you. Use this.
So you're suggesting, John, that we change the agreement and just change it to only the assessment for the year twenty eighteen? And then ask them to revise the agreement for the years nineteen and twenty, is that what you're suggesting?
I don't wanna be hanging up on this either, because it needs to get done. I'm contradicting myself.
I, I know, and that's, I'm, I think you and I are in agreement, however, I think we should have signed this one.
I agree.
No, I'm, I, I agree too, we should get this signed, but I would like to throw the caveat in there that they might wanna get that updated the next time we have to have this conversation.
I'll send a stern email tomorrow.
Thank you.
A stern email.
Does that help?
Yeah, that, that, yeah. Well, keep, keep the contract on file and maybe say, this is what we want done in the future.
Yeah.
Maybe this is something when communities, you know, contract time comes up, start, you gotta implement it at some time. I don't know what's the big deal with implementing with Horace, and start here, we're, we're the first time, first town to, you know, switch over to it.
No, we're not.
No, switch over to a new contract form.
To have the new agreement, the revised on.
The revised agreement, and they could start revise, having all of, everybody do it.
Well, I think, for now, let's let Lucas send the stern email and we'll get on with it.
I'll motion to approve the.
All right. John makes a motion, Sharon makes a second. Let's see, we'll roll call this one too, John?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
All right, we're done with that.
And then, Mr. Mayor, like I said, we can't act.
Nope.
The city council shouldn't act on the planning agreement, considering there are no.
I think what we'll do, Lucas, is, um, we can send a, just a refresher email, like.
Email Hallie's firm.
Yeah, ask her if she can, if we can try and get this taken care of by our next meeting.
Okay.
Be awesome.
It's difficult for them to come up with a figure too, because it's kind of a mis, a moving target.
I get it.
Hallie said, you know, it could be eight hundred dollars one month and you may go three months with no charge.
Well, we can make it work, we just need a starting point.
Yeah, just, that's what we need, all we need is a starting point, because we'll, I know we gotta be flexible with this, but just give me a number.
I mean, even if it's a range of numbers.
Yeah.
You know?
Otherwise, right now, we've just got blank check.
Right.
We don't do blank checks, so gotta give me a number, we can work with that.
If you look at that contract on the bottom line, the dollar amount was X, X, X.
Right.
They don't actually know.
But I thought maybe if they had some more meetings, they might be able to at least come up with an average. I know it'll float.
Not to exceed a certain dollar amount or, a minimum of, you know, we think it'll be eight hundred dollars at a bare minimum. For the year up to, not to, it's just something.
I like that, Sharon, that's, that's good.
At least it's something to work with, and if it has to slide one way or the other, we'll, we'll get it figured out. It's just that, okay. Yeah, good.
You just hate giving carte blanche, I mean.
So Lucas has to adjust the tone of his email then?
Stern but friendly, there we go. All right, so water rate ordinance, Lucas, you've just.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, this one, as we've done in many of the other ordinances, basically just taking out language that refers to any dollar amount. And then just say it's set by fee schedule and then, uh, Councilman Schmidt has already worked on the resolution setting the fees for this one. But it's just before that is passed or approved, the ordinance has to be changed first, otherwise it's conflicting and the ordinance will trump the resolution.
Nope, this was part of the process. Squared away. Now, this one's pretty much the no-brainer.
And what's odd about this is this ordinance was done in 2015, I believe.
Yep. Right, well, we'll just make a change to it.
When was it done?
2015.
Yeah, it was at least two years ago. Before your time?
I don't remember doing this. Do you remember doing this?
But it, it, it just, uh, it keeps up because chapter 901 says it's set by resolution.
Yep.
And so now 902 will say it's set by resolution or fee schedule set by resolution. So it's up to the, to the council if you guys would like to do the first reading tonight or if you want to wait to do the first reading on October 16th.
We'll do the first reading tonight.
We can do the first reading.
Because, yeah, it, it can change too. The ordinance can change.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Sharon. John's the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agreed. Yeah.
Because Councilman Schmidt obviously has his, uh, stamp on this, right?
Yep.
And I do remember talking about water rates a long time ago, but I don't remember so much an ordinance, but you never know.
Okay, Lucas, that's all I see on the list. We're good?
That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Jim, you're up to bat.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, um, I think we'll start with Lost River. You approved the pay estimate number six for work completed in September. That's a lot of paving and concrete work, sidewalks and streets. That work continues. There hasn't been a lot of, uh, work since last week. The rain has kind of slowed them down a bit. The other item on Lost River is change order number five that we tabled last week. Andrew Sill, the design engineer with Lowry is here to kind of explain to you guys a little bit more of what they are looking for. And, uh, I'll turn it over to Andrew. He kind of give you an update and tell you what he, what they're trying to, yeah.
Well, you guys mind if I just draw?
Sure.
Probably, it's, because otherwise the camera's on, you have to on there if you want to just do that.
All right.
Basically, the change we're looking at is the developer wants to plat, um, two additional lots. And while the road is, is open before we actually pave and do curb and gutter in that section, we'd like to install the, uh, sewer and water services. It'll just be two water service and two center sewer services into these future lots. I believe at this point, which probably wasn't completed as of the last council meeting, the preliminary plat has been issued, uh, to the city that shows these additional lots. If we wait to do this until a future phase of this project, ultimately, this area is going to get paved. In order to hook these services up, we're going to have to cut out curb and gutter. We're going to have to cut out pavement and then you are left with a fairly large patch indefinitely. Um, so it just, um, on the engineering and the pure mechanic side of things, doing it now is, is, would be the best. Um, but obviously, as this is not formally platted, we need your okay to, to do that.
You said there was a preliminary sent to the city?
It, it should have been issued.
It was sent, uh, sent in today. Jack had his, his assistant drop off the check and the plat. Perry has it. I forwarded it to Lucas and, uh, people within our office, so process has been started.
Okay. So plating is oriented, I'll see it. Next.
Now, we're, I, I can't see us having any problem with them putting in plumbing to nowhere. If they want to put in plumbing to nowhere, we don't care whether they get the nowhere approved or not. It is, it hasn't, it hasn't come to us. But I think it actually makes sense for them to do what they want to do now.
Oh, I agree. I think it makes perfect sense to do it now.
Yeah, they're rolling, they're rolling the dice.
Yep.
And that's okay, as far as I'm concerned.
The developer's comfortable with it. The, the additional lots that he's adding are going to be basically the same as what's to the, to the north of them on Goldfish Drive. If you, if you looked at it when it's complete, you would have thought it was all plotted as part of the first phase of this thing, so it's not, nothing different.
So what are we talking about when it comes to lot sizes?
I believe this is a, a pair of forties and then one that's like 62. The end lot's going to be a little bigger. Um, which should be basically the same as the lots to the, to the north. And so I have, um.
This location, Sharon, is along the west side of the subdivision and that's where the, that's where the, uh, smaller lots are.
And basically, it's going to be. These are already, already plotted and part of the project. We're just taking this larger lot that he was thinking of having lots facing would be south and he wants to face into the east now, so they're going to be like, what's going to be here, so we're having only having the south services, which is. And I think the developer also understands that, that he's at risk of the city needs to approve this, um, plat to make this. You guys approving this change order in no way says you're good at this, this plat.
I mean, if you're comfortable with the rest, it's more so you guys know what's coming your way too. I mean, we can, I, I see where they're coming from too. I just.
Yeah, I, I agree with what they're trying to do. Uh, he's rolling the dice. I'm getting the approval.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Don't want to ever presuppose that.
No.
And yeah, I understand that and Jack understands that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, as long as we all understand that, I mean, again, I.
Yeah, I agree 100% as long as, yeah, and I don't see any hang-up potentially coming, but I'm not going to put a stamp on that part of it right now. And we'll let it go through the process and get approved that way.
Absolutely.
I, I think approving the change order for that now makes sense.
Yep. Didn't, last time we talked about this, or last week, it was like there were still a lot of questions. Okay, that answers that.
Okay, but, but that raises a question. If we approve the change order and we don't approve the plat, then in essence, we're paying for a service that goes to nothing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So why would we do that?
Do we know that? I mean, yeah, I said, I know where you're coming from.
Well, we, we don't know. We don't know if we're going to approve it. I mean, we know that in essence, the larger lots are preferable to the smaller lots from the perspective of all of our vision meetings. So to approve more smaller lots or, or to approve services that would go to smaller lots presupposing, because why would we approve it? If we're not going to approve to have more smaller lots, then there's no reason for us to approve a change order.
How much is change order?
The change order is an increase of, uh, 20, roughly 25,000, 24,000 by 8,035 cents. And it is well within our budget on this one, uh, within our contingency.
What other contingencies possibly could there be? I mean, where are we at in the completion of, percentage of completion?
Uh, to, to date, we have an increase of would be about 250,000. That includes the addition of Box Elder Circle on the south and Ossers Third. It's approved and everything is in place. And then there was, um, uh, what were some of the other?
The light poles got changed.
Light poles were a deletion. They were a deletion and then we added some plumbing in the south side of it. And then there's some park stuff too down there. So I don't envision there being a lot of, a lot of, um, more changes. I, I guess you're working more with Jack than I am, so. It's kind of moving target, I think, I understand.
It, it, it is at this point, and, and really all of our underground work is for the most part done with the exception of the pond. Usually when you run into something on a project, that's a a huge change that you didn't expect. We, we, we should have found it by now if, if it was going to happen on this project.
In general, you can object here, I, um, I don't see us having any big surprises coming up.
No, with the work that's remaining is sidewalks, some paving, underground on that Box Elder Circle and then pond excavation. So with the pond excavation, just digging the big hole and then, uh, finish installing the pumps and, and other things, pump station purchases, so. I don't foresee there being a, a large change order coming. If this does get approved, goes through the plating process or planning process and the road is complete, the sidewalk's complete and the curb gutter's complete, it's very costly to do that, so to replace all that.
I mean, I'd be more comfortable not approving the change order and having the developer cover that cost himself up until the time that if we approve the plat, then we can transfer that change order cost and we can approve it at that point in time. But if we don't, why should the city be on the hook for that money? And I mean, that's, that's nothing against you or against the developer, but I, I don't see us being good fiscal, you know, you showing good fiscal responsibility by approving something and paying for it when we don't know for sure that we're going to approve that plat.
The only advantage with the change order is it, it contractually obligates the contractor to perform that work to the, to the project specifications. If it's just paid out of pocket by Jack to do that, it's, I mean, that's basically a contract between Jack and KPH that the city doesn't have involvement in. And, and I think we could, you know, I, I think Jack would work with you on something like that, but that, the change order makes things a lot cleaner contractually on, on the project.
I think that when it came time to assess too, if that didn't get broken out, you could assess that lot for three sewers and three waters. So that lot itself is paying for the cost. It's not, it's not as if, if that, that doesn't get subdivided, that they still only get assessed for one and one. That's a special assessment commission thing, but that's the way I would look at it. It's, you know, we did the water job by hookup. We did the sewer job by hookup and they got, they got three hookups of each.
So that lot would potentially have another $25,000 of specials.
Yeah.
Which in turn, for Jack to sell it, would probably have to do something on special at, at his point to probably sell that lot.
Then it would be up to him.
Exactly, so then you are kind of putting it back on.
The risk is back on.
Developer. Absolutely.
So I, I see that working with a beam within the contingency plan. Knowing the lot sizes there and the way it fits in the neighborhood, I, I mean, again, I'm not going to speak for planning its own. It, it makes sense.
Doesn't seem out of the realm. I guess that's what it does.
I just don't, I don't want to rip the street up. It's going to bump. It's going to, it's going to crack. It's, it, it's just not a if, the pure engineering of it is, is I, I don't want to have to rip the street up to writing those services in. Okay, more discussion?
Well, I think it, it's really just the same. I mean, I understand the concern about wanting to rip the street up and by the same token, I don't want to pay for it and put the city on the hook for money if we're not going to approve it because.
Well, I think it, like Mr. Doherty was saying, it would potentially go on that, it could potentially go on that lot.
Well, I'd really like to then make certain that when that happens, that it goes there and it doesn't just get absorbed in or split out or that, you know, it falls between the cracks or any of those things that can happen because.
Do we have any insurance on that, Jim?
Uh, other than that, I will do my best to make sure that gets done. I, I've helped the special assessment commission with determining who has serviced for the last two, so I would assume that I'll be involved with the, um, assessment of, of lots number two, so. I mean, if they, if the commission does decide to do it, even if they would do it by a square foot or acre, that lot is still going to be much bigger than the other ones in that area, therefore resulting in a larger assessment, so.
That, that'd be the only condition I'd have for.
Russ, you got anything on this one you want to throw in?
Can I look at this?
Yeah. And I, I can give you an estimate.
These are going to be just the new services. I mean, this lot, we already threw a service, pair of services into.
Okay.
These two additional will be getting water and sewerage.
What did you give to the city for the plat?
I don't have that with me, Jim. Do you have?
I, I don't. Perry, Perry got the original.
What, what is your question?
He wants to see what the plat.
I'd like to see what the plat looks like because, uh.
I could probably find it and get it.
Because what I'm looking at here is the engineering drawing for the, uh.
Um, let me see here if I can.
These are all engineering, right?
They are.
Wasn't included in the other ones.
Well, we shouldn't be pre-approved in flats.
No, we're not going to pre-approve. I just want to see what it looks like.
So this is what they.
Check your email, Cory. The first one or the second one?
Forty-two.
The PDF or the PNG?
Uh, do the PDF.
Yep. Russ, you want to see it on my laptop?
Cory's got the plat up on the.
See him.
That's what he's looking at. What are the other lots next to it in something, north of it?
I don't have those dimensions with me.
I don't think we have enough information to approve this.
What's the final answer, should we take a guess?
Well, I know.
We have, uh. There's Karen Road held up to, to about this to, to have, to ask KPH to not install a section of her, her road. Um, and so we need to get direction on this to close it.
Is this your last part they have to do or?
I mean, a lot of it. Usually, the, the concern is, is it's October 2nd. I understand that. I understand that it's pretty exciting in a tight spot, but we got maybe a, a month that we have and get paving done and it's going to be cold or any of these issues, um, is just a possibility by this point in the year, so.
No.
We don't have a plat that shows the rest of the neighborhood in it, do we? Look those other lots on the.
I'm sure there is one online with me.
Because there's, there's no saying that it's going to get approved like that. I'm not comfortable with that.
Let me ask you guys this question. If Jack will flip the bill directly with KPH, will you guys allow the infrastructure to be installed? And then once, uh, once we get the plat approved, we'll come to you guys with the change order on the approved plat.
Well, to throw it back at you, what if it doesn't get approved as, as planned here?
That's the conver, I'll have that conversation with Jack tomorrow and clearly lay that out with him.
It, it might not be, what if the three lots get turned into two even, just to, to throw a, an option out there. You don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah.
It's basically these size lots, right, that get continued?
What are these right now?
So these here basically get continued.
And it's, it's a pair of forty-two, so we have everything from.
Well, you got a mix all the way down there.
We have fifty-five here, forty-two's here, sixty-five, there's going to be forty-two, forty-two, eighty-five, that's a bigger one at the end.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not, you know, when you look at the proximity, no, it's not the same as the ones next to it necessarily, but if you look at the mix.
There's a mix all the way along there.
Fits right into.
Same way across the street too.
Yeah.
Same way, the way he's got it along here too.
We should not be looking at this. So we, we really shouldn't be.
Is it okay if we look at that?
No, why can't you look at it? It's just a plat book, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if Mr. Dwyer pays for this out of pocket and planning that goes through planning zone and it gets approved, that he can. that he can come back and then ask for it to be approved with a change order?
That's something that I'm not going to, I'm not going to say yes or no on that without looking into it more. That's why these can't just be dropped the day of and then need a legal determination on it.
The other problem is planning zone just met last week, and we knew about this last Monday, we have planning zone Tuesday.
Well, the, the other thing is, if they just got it today, they won't have, they won't have time to be published to meet us at our next meeting, even.
Not even close.
Not even close. Used to have a sign that worked that said, uh, "The rush on your part does not constitute an emergency on mine."
Yeah.
On the scheme of a four million dollar construction project, it's two water services and it's two sanitary services to save money in the future and also help this piece of infrastructure not have to get dug up, so. I, I get you guys are in a tight spot. Um, I don't think Jack wanted to push you guys here, but it's, it's where we're at.
I think we need a legal determination before we, before we decide, to be honest with you.
But if Jack...
Well, you can do the change order, but I don't know. You can do the change order if you want, or prove it, deny it, whatever, that's a council decision. But I don't know is to say from a legal standpoint, if Jack pays for it, then comes back and says, not while the city paid, take over that responsibility. I don't know what, what document you would have for that, what legal document you would have for that.
So I mean, Jack's taking it, Jack would probably be the one more at risk. If he wants to pay for it and do it, there's no guarantees he'll get reimbursed for it at all.
No, and, and I think he's willing to.
Is that, is that correct?
I'm not sure, and that's why I'm just, I'm not comfortable making any sort of legal determination on that because I don't want someone to be responsible for twenty-five thousand dollars. May not seem like a lot in the grand scheme of things, but that's a lot of money.
I, I get that.
Basically, can Jack hire KPH to install this infrastructure and have interstate oversee it, understanding that potentially it's being done privately? It'll be done to city standards?
In a project that's supposed to be owned by the city, that's a...
And it'll be, the city engineer will inspect it, will review it, it'll be done to the same specifications this project. We just want to get it in the ground here before freeze-out.
I don't know what the legal ramification of that is in, in...
Do, do we, do, you need to find that out, ask, do research on it, I take it?
Yeah, like I said, because it's, it's twenty-five grand.
Well, it's outside.
If I say the wrong thing, somebody's owed twenty-five thousand dollars, potentially.
Well, no, Mr. Dwyer would be out twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, that's somebody.
Well, he's the one assuming the risk.
He's understanding.
I get that.
He's understanding the risk.
It's, it's mixing private and public, is what's concerning me.
And there's only really one contract, and that's for the city and KPH.
Correct.
As it stands right now.
This is the city's project.
This is odd.
I know it is, and I'll think of it, trying to do it the day of or do it right now.
I would tell you guys that on, on municipal projects, having a contractor do something out of convenience because they're there and then bringing a change order to the city for approval after the fact is not, not unheard of. It's no different than change order for the pavement that I put at the entrance. I mean, that work was done three weeks ago, four weeks ago, because they were out there and they had the ability to do it. And it's just, it's the economics of it, and, and, and we're in, we're in a similar situation here where we just, they're out there, they got the equipment. We need to get the infrastructure, and that's all we're asking for.
But I'm not comfortable spending money that we don't know is going to be approved. We, there's no plat, there's no nothing. So that's, that's, I mean, that's twenty-five thousand dollars the city's out.
No, the ci- no, I'm, no, the city won't be out that. I think that's clear. I think it comes down to, are we willing to let Mr. Dwyer put this in at his expense, at his risk, a hundred percent? That's the area that, yeah, I, granted, I, I foresee this being, it makes sense to do it now before the road, before freeze-out. It probably makes sense on the lots, but there's no guarantees.
No.
But does Mr. Dwyer want to take the risk on it and incur that twenty-five hundred dollars that he may, or twenty-five thousand that he may never get back? Is that wrong?
I don't know if, if we're, if legally, we can answer that question. I mean, you're saying, that's a, that's a, that's a city project, and we can't, I, I can't speak for Mr. Dwyer contracting with the contractor to do something outside the scope of the project, I mean, and then we're expected to take that over? I, I don't know if, if we can even do that.
Yeah, Russ, what's up?
I'd just like to, this is now from private citizen, I'd like to refresh your memory about four months back when we were sweating bullets over this thing about, about approving something to start before we actually had the money. You, you walked the plank once in one.
Well, the money is there for this one with the, among contingencies that are available.
But we don't have to use the contingency.
Correct. I'm just saying that...
The fact that it's there is, does not, does not give me any reassurance because we never know, just like in the other project, if we're not going to be able to get something that's going to cost us a lot more money. We, we just, we just don't know, and so we don't need to be spending money that, just because it's available.
Well, the, the, the unique thing on that is if this were to go, you keep it with the city and contingencies, and I may be more comfortable with that because it remains a city project, city oversight, and it's smoother that way. If it doesn't go, twenty-five thousand dollars is going to be put on that lot. Mr. Dwyer's going to be paying that to sell that lot. There, there's, people are not going to pay the extra twenty-five thousand dollars in specials on that lot when it comes time. It's going to sit there, and he's going to have to negotiate probably twenty-five thousand dollars or more to do that, or that lot's going to have a few more thousand special, dollars in specials. It's going to come down to the developer responsibility selling it is where, where that'll go.
Lucas, what do you got?
Considering we don't really know quite the legal responsibilities of this, is this something that we could just table and then have a special meeting or just discuss it on October sixteenth? It's not like it's that far away, and I'm not sure if...
I would say right now, that being we don't understand the legalies here.
I don't know if fourteen days is going to make that big of a difference on this, but if a special meeting is needed, it's always an option.
Why don't you, let's, let's put it this way, why don't you go see what we can do, where our legal obligations are, or what we'll get into, and then we can make a judgment call whether we need to call a special meeting or not?
Fair.
I mean, it's just we got to figure, we got to make sure we're on the legal...
So what is Lucas to define here? I'm, I'm trying to...
Well, isn't this, we're talking about the, the city owns this...
It's a city-owned project.
Right, but if this, if this property had been platted in the original plat, it would be part of the project, it would be just done.
Yeah.
So now that they want to, the possibility to make it three lots instead of one, if it were... You, you know, we've done, I've done stuff where a lot has duplex on it and you put services on both ends of it. We, we do that, that's the way it is. So are you looking at the funding of it? Are you looking at the ability to do it, or what are we, what, what's the hangup, I guess? I, I'm just...
I think it's, I'm getting, I'm saying...
Is it the fact that it's not platted?
Yes.
Is that what we're getting back to?
Yeah.
That's, that's my take, which I, again, I'm not speaking for anybody, but in my mind, it makes sense on the plat and it blends with the rest of the neighborhood. But we're not in the habit of jumping over top of it.
Yep.
But again, I feel the reassurance and the comfort with it going back where ultimately, let's keep it within the city project because that's the best way to do it, getting it private, public, that's not what this is designed for. It's still going to put, as long as those twenty-five thousand dollars, we're within our contingency and those will stay on that property. It's not going to affect the rest of it. I, I think the issue was with twenty-five, and Sharon's concern is, is very good, and I agree with you. You don't want to risk twenty-five thousand dollars of extra infrastructure that would float out to the rest of the neighborhood.
Right.
That's not what we want, so it would stay on that property, which bottom line means, developer, it's a developer responsibility. It's flat out.
Falls back on that.
It falls back on, on Jack.
If it doesn't get platted, the way you get, the way we're hoping it gets platted, it would be on, on that lot.
Yeah. Hundred percent.
There's no scenario, regardless of how we do this, where the city would end up eating that, that cost.
I, yeah.
Is that fair assessment?
Yeah, and that's what I said, I'm not saying, my concern was the, having Jack pay for it and then working out something with the city, that's the part that I'm not sure of.
So we're, we're potentially, Jack would be paying for this if it didn't go, in my mind. If he can't replat this, it's, he's going to be paying that twenty-five out of his own pocket when he gets somebody, talks to somebody to buy it.
Which is way less than what he'll be paying to cut into that.
Because we don't want the road cut up and all that, that makes no sense.
I dug up the, I finally have the picture that I wanted to see.
Okay.
Can I show it to you?
Sure.
Because I didn't remember a big block out there, it just wasn't anything done with it, you know?
Right.
I cannot speak for the other four, but I can tell you that the likelihood is we're going to, we're going to go with it because it's just a continuation.
Of what you have.
I guess that's why I saved all this stuff.
Glad you hit it in your briefcase today.
And bring it with you.
Yes, I, I...
I have to be empty about every three months.
At least you had that one here.
Only every three months.
Mr. Mayor, from a legal standpoint, I would be more comfortable just approving the change order than I would dealing with
Yep.
the private funding and then coming back and then having the city take over. That's the part that I'm not sure on.
I would agree.
The change order stuff, I get that.
Change order.
But that, like I said, that's just from a legal standpoint, for comfortability purposes, it's completely up to the council on what, um, the council wants to do.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve a change order.
Okay. Sure, what do you think?
I don't know, I'm still thinking.
Sharon, my vote?
No.
I get, I get where you're, I, I agree, but I think it's, it's...
I don't know if I'm, if I agree yet, I'm, I'm really, I'm thinking. I mean, I really do have some concerns about approving a change order to put infrastructure on an unplatted property and just putting it out there, and that... And especially on the short notice, because again, we've, we've been down this road many times at these council meetings, and it's, it's unfair to put that, to bring that to the city and then expect that word.
If, if it wasn't a continuation down the line, I think there's more validity to not...
To push it back.
To push it back, but with it being just a straight shot down, I'd almost want to see this done versus something else done.
Well, I don't, I don't even want to have a conversation about plating of that land until it goes through the proper processes, and I don't think we should be having that discussion now. That is going through the process, it will get to us eventually after it goes there. And I understand from the developer perspective, logically, if I was in issues, I'd want to do the exact same thing. It makes sense to do this now before you put the road in. Yeah, absolutely, but from the perspective of, do we pay for it? You know, that's...
Can I, can I add one more, just thought to that? We have, if you look at the, the full design of this project, you know, nothing else is, is platted. We have stubs going into unplatted land all over this project for future build-outs to avoid having to coring the manholes and dig under roads and re-dig up new infrastructure. And so all we're doing is we're just, we're stubbing out for future, future growth, um, just out of, out of convenience here. So whether it gets platted or it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't, these services don't necessarily have to be, to be utilized. They, they will be, this is, this is what Jack wants to do with this, but it's, it's a stub out for future development.
Well, yeah, and that's kind of where the challenge comes in, because if it doesn't get approved or if it gets approved for less lots than, than what you're thinking, you know, as long as we can ensure that those costs are attributed to however many lots it ends up being, whether it's one, two, or three, then that's really the, that's the consideration. And of course, it's not platted, so we don't really know what it's going to be. And, and that's where the challenge comes in, because we're not really in the, typically in the business of just approving, doing that on unplatted property.
It's technically going to be assessed to one lot, is what it would be right now, correct?
Right now, mhm.
If, if it wasn't replatted.
If, if the plat completely gets denied, it all goes to that lot to the west.
It'd be one lot, so I, I don't see where it's a, where we're in jeopardy of anything. I, granted, I, I don't like the process, I'll agree with Sharon a hundred percent. This should have been done earlier, you guys failed on that end, but ostensibly though, from a cost-saving standpoint in the grand scheme of it, it makes sense.
You know, the thing I don't like is I, I'm probably even more concerned about having Jack take on the cost outside of the scope of the project because to me, that's even messier...
Yep.
than doing it as a change order and, and having it attributed to that land. And the other concerns me even more, because that seems to be, that seems to open a really bigger can of worms. And so I don't want to go down that route either.
No, and that's why I said doing it, keeping it is a, under the, is a change order. I think we keep control of it, uh, the assessments would go onto that property, and again, Jack would still ultimately, he's the one that's putting his neck out for twenty-five thousand because you're going to have to pay down specials on that lot to sell it when the time comes, so.
All right, so John's got a motion on the table. Sharon?
All right, I'll second it.
Okay, so, just to do it properly?
Yes.
Yes, we'll call it. John, Sharon? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
All right, after the last meeting, last, we'll continue on here. Um, I sent the plans, preliminary plans, to the highway department for their review. They had a request that we do so after we approve them. They had three comments on them. One was, could the crossing be moved to the south, south of the road in front of the school? Uh, we had some discussion on that, Sharon and I did, and I responded back that we would prefer it not be. We would like it to be closer to the school. Haven't heard anything back on that. Uh, the second item was that they would prefer pedestrian signs with LED lights around the perimeter. I don't have a problem with that. And the third was, instead of a pavement marking paint, they would like a tape, a grooved-in tape, something that maybe lasts a little longer with a, a different striping pattern, which is, which is fine by me. It does, it did put us back roughly a week, so I did modify the completion and everything by a week. The one thing that does concern me is that, that the DOT's construction specifications do list a preform pavement marking. Uh, you don't install it after September first and you don't install it before June first, so... So what we could do is, we could do a project that has a completion date of, say, I change that to be the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and then we would just say that all work has to be completed before that date. Pavement marking has to be completed by the first, the first full week in June is what I would propose.
Okay, fair enough.
That way, if we can, if we can take, take advantage of any type of late-season work, we can see, uh, when we get the bids back or the quotes back, we'll know more, but that's kind of the way I'd like to proceed with it. If it makes you feel better, if the pavement gets above fifty degrees, you can do it on an engineer's discretion, but...
There we go.
The other thing too is that the, the LED lit signs are not, they're not, uh, real inexpensive. So between that and then neither is the pavement markings. It's roughly, we were at forty-seven thousand estimated cost of the probable project, now it's at fifty-four thousand. It's a, the panel, the signs are, uh, I, I estimate around twenty-five hundred to install the piece, and then the roofing tape or the lines are about thirty dollars a, a foot, so... I just wanted to update, update you guys on that, because we were at forty-seven, now we're at fifty-four. These aren't guarantees, they're just estimates, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of that before we push forward with it and solicit the quotes, so, I mean, you guys still on board with that?
Yeah.
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 So I will get those out to some contractors here the next day.
Okay.
Yay.
Uh, the signs will be similar to the stop signs at. The four-way stop there with the perimeter lighting. These will be amber lighting, not red. I spec the same manufacturer, is the case. The third thing I forgot to mention on that is that the county would like to know who's gonna assume responsibility for the maintenance of the signage and the maintenance of the pavement marking. Is that something the city would like to look into? Um, I don't know if we, what's, I don't know what your thoughts are on that, Lucas.
What's, what is maintenance of the sign?
Well, if somebody would fall into it, I would assume that you would be responsible for putting it back up. And if the, uh, striping wears off and some, or something happens. You, the city would be responsible for replacing that.
That's kinda normal maintenance.
It's not untypical with something like that. It's, it's really not. So, I mean. But I mean, it's something we probably have to look into.
But that would be under the highway funds, right? Vance, I mean, that's kind of what, that's all about.
For the highway funds, yeah. The county's not funding it, so.
Yeah. Say it's on the city.
So, okay. So we're all aware that the city is responsible for the maintenance of that. And that's what I'll.
As long as you don't knock it off once a week, we're good.
Well, yeah, as long as it's not a county snowball that knocks it off. Okay?
Alright.
We'll get through that. Uh, the big news last Friday was the loan for the connection to Fargo Deer Creek was approved by the industrial commission.
Yes! That's why old Dougie was late coming to the meeting on Saturday.
Our office will see that today.
So, with that, we do have the contracts to the notice to award and the notice to proceed. Uh, well, I'll get those to you for signatures.
Okay.
Um, is that, uh, it's making a motion.
Have they approved them yet?
They approved the con, uh, they approved the project.
Contingent on funding, wasn't it?
Contingent upon funding, yes. So the funding is in place, so they don't have to do anything more.
Nope, that should be it.
Yeah, I think we're on a, we're a goal here.
Yep, I'll get those advanced. We'll get those signed and get them, get them back. Uh, we do have a pre-con. It looks like it's gonna be Thursday afternoon, maybe later in the afternoon. And, uh, all indications are starting very soon, starting on the Lost River section coming towards.
It's very soon.
What's that?
What's very soon?
Fairly soon. Yeah, I, uh, next week is what I, I, we'll get a better idea. We'll get a better idea Thursday, but that's what I've been told. Maybe, maybe it'll get, maybe the middle of the week, but.
And they got manpower to make sure we've got connectivity.
They certainly say they do. I, I will have more answers on Thursday afternoon. There's, there's questions now that we have everything in place. There's no more ifs, as Sharon, we talked about last week.
That just has to happen.
Yes, it does. And I, I think that everyone's on board with that. We.
That's why I like.
Yeah, you're meeting Thursday and they're starting next week. That's.
Yeah, I, I hope I, I hope that's the case. I hate to say something wrong, but that's what I've.
Well, we'll find out for sure when we have that pre-con meeting.
Yes, um.
So hopefully we'll even get the full line in this year.
I think as long as, I have the shop drawings for the pre-casts and all that. I'm approving them as we speak. Or I did it this afternoon and I'll work on it tomorrow too, get them back as soon as I can get into production and get all that stuff being, uh, that has to be made. Get it up here and, or get it in production and get it up here, so.
Do we have any update on that fusible pipe?
Um, as far as the quantity of it, I haven't heard anything.
Delivery dates?
There's a shortage?
I haven't heard anything on the unavailability of it.
Or availability.
I, I haven't heard anything on the guarantee of availability either. Uh, the last that I had heard, provided I'm not misspeaking, was there was. Uh, enough to get, get into, to, um, County Seventeen. And that's where the bulk of the, of the dr- the, um, directional drilling is. When we go up, up north along Seventeen, the only places that we're doing the drilling is underneath the roads. The rest of it is open cut, so there's just traditional gasketed pipe.
Well, I know there's probably some up on Fifty Second Avenue that lay in there, but. I suppose that's not gonna help us to relocate it, is it?
Probably not. Volunteer your pickup to hook on and yank it down here.
So if we could maybe try to get an update by our next meeting.
Yep, I, I definitely, that would be.
John, you can bring that up.
What's that?
You bring that up.
About barring the pipe?
Yeah.
So, let's see here. That's all I have. I don't have a lot from last week. Yes, John?
I've got a question for you.
Okay.
Uh, at League of Cities, I heard rumor that there is approval to redo our road down here on Seventeen, or a plan to do it. That that was agreed upon by. Is that something you can check in on?
I will. You're talking about the south, south there?
The bi- it's a bypass road going.
Right, I know, maybe Sharon knows a little more about that and that Jason Benson's an update.
Yeah, did the judge okay the funds? Cause that's what this all came down to, didn't it?
Sharon will know more about that, but I certainly can look into it if, if we don't know what.
I have an update, yeah.
Okay. Uh, that's all I have. Like I said, it's a short week, uh, rain week, so I, I don't have a whole lot for you.
Okay. So then we'll move on to portfolios. Sharon, you're up first.
Okay, so I'll give the update on the Jason Benson update on the, the road. Uh, there is no update. That's the update. The update is that the judge, they had a meeting on last week. And the upstream coalition is putting up a big fight. And they want only the existing road to be put back. They do not wanna bypass road put in. And if, if they don't change their opinion and allow a bypass road. It would be impossible for the county to fill in a thirty-foot deep hole. That's, who knows? How many hundreds of, well, it's impossible. Even if next year, they decide that they're, that they're gonna scrap the whole diversion project. To put the whole, it's impossible to do it in the amount of time that's, that exists now. The only option is a bypass road temporarily to go to the west. So they are meeting again. And Jason actually was expecting an answer tomorrow. So he said, as soon as he knows, he will call so that we can know and we can let people know what the status is. Because until they release funding and approve that bypass road, nothing's gonna happen. Because they wanna use the money from the project and have the contractor, the original diversion authority contractor, create the bypass road. So that they can get it in now. If they have to move that road eventually in the springtime. Either back where old County Seventeen was, you know, when it went straight, or to move it somewhere else. They're able to take everything they're gonna put down on the bypass road and use, reuse the majority of it in the construction of the new road. With the, he said with the exception of some small aggregate that gets mixed in with the, the topsoil. So, not a, I mean, to him, that's not a big deal, but the cost difference is about twenty-five thousand dollars for a bypass road. And, oh, anywhere, I think he said, he, I think he was talking about a million dollars to put the, to put the road back straight. Because you gotta fill in the hole, you gotta compact it all. It's not, it's, I mean, we all know, you dig a hole, you try to put the dirt back in. It doesn't go in the same way it came out, even if you put it all back in there. And so when you have a big gigantic hole, it's, yeah. So anyway, hopefully we'll know tomorrow. I don't know. I mean, as soon as he knows, he'll let us know.
Yeah, okay.
Which.
So the judge gave approval on this to do it.
Nope.
Last week.
Well.
And then it went to.
The judge might've given approval, but it's, they're fought it and now there's no approval, cause there's no funds released.
That's it. It's the, it's the judge's discretion to release the funds for these little things and so far they have been reluctant to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's the upstream coalition, that they just wanna throw another wrench in.
Well, the upstream coalition even said take down all the dikes and Oxbow and put that back the way it was too. And they were like, oh, absolutely not. We're not doing that, so.
Alright.
So, anyway.
So, I'll keep quiet. Yeah. Just waiting here.
So, I mean, you know, it's.
Okay, so what was your League of Cities takeaway?
Um, League of Cities takeaway. Uh, we had some really interesting discussions during the conference. I think there was a, I really enjoyed the talk on contracting for, what was it? Contracting for quality? Was that what it was called? I don't remember what it was called now. But having different contractors for different types of projects, um, looking at.
Oh, yes, okay.
Scopes and things like that. Um, even the interview process, the HR interview process, just different ways of doing that.
Mm-hmm.
So. And I think the only other addition I have is. The contract for putting lights on the ball field was presented to Shannon at the meeting on the twenty-fifth for her to sign.
Okay.
That looks like that's going forward.
So the paperwork is in her lap now?
She probably signed it that night too.
Okay. That'll be nice. Okay.
Go for the comments.
Gotcha. Dave's gone. Brian's gone here too. Um, he was just gonna talk about the SSL project and that. We just, well, went through that. Um, we had talked about, Vance, we had talked about the letter that we were gonna have to put together to Donnie. We should probably do that. Well, I'll have Brian put together that for the water race with the trailer park and all that. We'll get that done. Okay, John? Go ahead, this is yours.
Well, we, last meeting, uh, last council meeting last week, we had discussion on tree ordinance. So we had Tuesday night P and Z, and I brought that up with that group. And we do have some ordinance in place. One of the things we need to double check and look on is it in the developers agreement. Having a, it's not having it in the, uh, developers agreement, a landscape plan. And it's something that's probably put out there, but we're not necessarily working with it.
Mm-hmm.
And following up, because we do have many developments that would be required to have trees planted in it. So it's something that we probably need to do, start doing a little labor, sending out some polite letters with resources on where they can get trees. And I think one of the good points on it, it's not a huge, it's not an expense. I mean, I think there are trees that you can get free everywhere. And to start with. And we need to put a list together.
The county's a great resource for trees. That's where I get mine, is through the county. Yep. And they're super cheap.
We're not trying to hammer everybody on this, but I think if we could form a letter, I'm kinda looking at Vance on this one, of course. To send out to the new neighborhoods on this is kind of requirements we have, uh, and then work with. Uh, what was the, uh? What's the resource for the, uh, Perry brought up? There's a resource that would help us select the right trees for the right area.
It's in the, uh, there's a forestry.
Yeah.
It was through one of the tree grants I was looking at last year.
Right.
They had a whole list of trees.
Well, yeah, like I said, the county will tell you exactly where you, they break it down each tree, where it, where it should grow, how big it's gonna get, what kind of soil it should have. Yeah, it's, they break it down.
So that's just something that we need to move forward on. Had some conversation on the Seventy-Sixth Avenue. I think at some point, we need to get a street study, road study, traffic study done. Probably sooner than later. Uh, and then along with that, it's also how is that road gonna be put in? Uh, what type of road? How far can we go with it? Working with hopefully West Fargo School to help fund some of it. And I think those conversations need, uh, come up rather quickly, so we know exactly where we stand on that road.
So to do, uh, to do a road study, right, we can go, the city can go to MetroCog and request a road study. All the funding, cause all that comes through the state, state DOT funds. So they're already allocated for twenty-eighteen, so we could get in the queue for a twenty-nineteen study.
And I think part of that is, uh, the initial conversation is, a lot of that construction should be done before construction of the school starts. Before that road's done. It's gonna be, uh, what would you call it? What kind of road you consider is gonna be, not a heavy duty, but a.
Well, it's, it's, it'd probably have to be what's called a, I think a ten-ton road. The reason I say that is the, uh, the number of overweight trucks that that road takes every year is phenomenal. And they are overweight.
Yep.
But it'll be the other thing too, is once we, we start looking at that and they ever wind up hooking into the interstate, you know we're gonna have truck traffic through there.
Well, that, that too, but the, the farm trucks that were running down there.
Sure, I, I know.
Yeah, are, I've.
Oh, no, they're not.
I've driven, I've driven ninety-one thousand pound trucks.
What's your point here, bud?
It has, the good thing is, you know, we, we only probably have to run quarter mile, half mile section, but how far do we put it? Do we go the full width with turning lanes to start with? That's something that, um, I think West Fargo brought up when we met with them and some of the hiccups they had. Uh, as far as planning strategy goes, it, sometimes you put in more infrastructure than you need, so you don't have to redo it later at a higher cost.
Yeah.
It's almost potentially a costly.
Think of something they ran into at Veterans, when they did Cheyenne there, on both on Fortieth and Veterans. It was just, you know.
And with it not being a long stretch, it, it probably makes sense at some point, so. Yeah, so we need to get going with some of that, along with road plan for Deer Creek and traffic coming out, so it, it's roads, Cory.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor, it's, it's a lot that we need to get studied on.
I don't disagree.
So let me find out what we need to, what we need for the project to get it in this, in the queue for upcoming projects.
Is that with S R F?
Because, well, no, it's through the state DOT. Typically, when those projects go into those queues, they're what they call shovel-ready projects. So that everything has been done up to, you know, getting ready to start the project. Or you have what you'd call is a study and you're just doing, you know, it's typically like a hundred thousand dollar projects. Where the state will fund seventy-five percent and the city will pay the other twenty-five percent of the project cost to do the study. And so if we just did a study, while that could get done in twenty-nineteen, I think, from what I'm hearing, John. I think you, you're suggesting we are ready to build a road in nineteen, not doing a study in nineteen.
I think you're looking at two parts. I think you're looking at building the road, but yet also doing a study in other areas around our community. You know, that's the other thing, is how are we gonna traffic flow? What are we gonna get for bridges at Fifty Second? Um, how, how are we gonna flow north?
Do we want a County Seventeen study, say from Fifty Second Avenue down to A Hundredth? I mean, is that the study we want?
Well, I think like when we talked about this before with Jason, we had mentioned that basically the pattern, I mean, yeah, it'd be nice to go the whole way if they could do that. But it certainly gets to be this, I'd say from Wall north to Fifty Second, and certainly Seventy-Six, cause that's gonna be their primary. Secondary will be up on Sixty-Fourth.
Right.
For now, you know, until things start moving all the first out. But I still think the primary one's gonna be Seventy-Sixth Avenue.
Alright, let, let's, let's talk about this, because we're gonna need to decide if we wanna study or are we looking to build a road. And, cause they're different. You know, the study of the traffic flows, easy enough to have them do. But because we're gonna schedule, it would be scheduled for nineteen, we'll probably want that road built in nineteen.
Well, that's what we're talking about. Do we, do we pre-make the road prior to the school's arrival? That's what we've been talking about.
Well, and I, and I think we decide that once we know that the bond's passed. You know, I think prior to that, we can. Kind of work on specs and stuff like that.
Well, that's the thing. We, we know the school is, it's gonna happen. It's one year or the next. Do we go ahead and get the specs planned so we're actually out of the game?
Yeah.
That's probably.
But that's what I mean. We'd, we'd have to plan it. And if this gets.
Right.
Still gotta do the planning upfront first.
Yep.
But then we can get a better handoff. So then what do we need for a road width and everything?
And, and, yeah, do we need, is that, are they two separate? One's a study of the corridor and the other one is the, the.
I think so. It's two parts.
Yep.
Russell?
The other question we have with planning and zoning is, uh, what type of street are we gonna put in? Are we gonna put in a city street or are we gonna leave ditches?
That's part of that planning, bud.
I mean, that's what I mean. We gotta come up with the plan. What do we?